It's about.
Nancy, I have a simple question.
Okay.
On the police budget under mechanic, I noticed that it's typically about twenty-nine-hundred, and there is nothing in the two thousand fourteen budget, but then it goes to thirty-four-twenty. Do they have a mechanic? Is that like a stipend pay?
That's correct.
So they fix the cruises, something goes wrong?
Some of the repairs and coordinate, some of the minor stuff and coordinate any fleet issues.
I see. How come there was nothing budgeted this year? Because there were new cruises and you didn't need a mechanic?
I'm not sure what, what's in.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is line.
The mechanic under the.
Five-one-four-six.
It was not budgeted, but it was.
Seven up on the bottom.
Right. I saw that, but I just.
Could be that you put it over to.
It might have been in a different budget, too.
Yeah, maybe this wasn't, so it looks like it was budgeted for thirty-four-twenty, right? Twenty-nine-hundred.
It's not a lot of money. I was curious if it was a stipend or not, and I found out it was, so.
Oh, yeah, it's not, okay, so that's why it's not, so it's probably.
What was that?
It is budgeted for fifteen, correct?
Right.
Yeah, I think it was just a clerical error because there's been some contractual negotiations that would give the option to eliminate that position, but it hasn't been, that hasn't.
That's the period forty-two.
That's correct.
Okay. Did you have another question on this budget? Any other members?
No.
I'm going to, I do have some suggestions I want to make, but I think I'm going to hold off until we go through. Any questions on the expenses in the police department?
Can I ask a question regarding training for the officers? Can you explain the budget for the training? I see that your budget for fifteen is the same as fourteen, and I just, is, can you just explain the training a little bit, please?
Well, basically, there's different training, some of it's mandatory.
Sure.
Some of it is, most of it is obviously necessary. So each year, they go through different types of training, whether it's in-service training, firearms training. They did some short-term certification and those type of things. There's legal updates, and there's CPR, first responder.
Do all of the officers and lieutenants, do they all go through some sort of a training every year?
All year long, constantly.
Good. Okay, thank you.
I got a question on the same line item. What I was looking at Scott is, they put in for one sixty-one, seven-six-four, you brought it back to one thirty-two. When I did the averaging, I came up with one thirty-nine, so would the one thirty-two be enough or would we fall short?
Personally, I think that whether it's any of the public safety, police or fire, or dispatches, more and more training is probably, the more training, the better.
Right.
So it's always, I think, one of those balancing acts of, I don't know if that's probably not the right word, but they obviously would request more and more training as much as they could get for each officer, especially with the different things that have gone on in the past and whatnot. So I think that if there's additional monies, we can always put additional monies towards training.
Nancy, if I could ask the manager a question on the same page, page twenty-three. It's under the expenses. On the parking control expense, could I ask what that is, please?
Is that for the software?
That would be for, they still maintain an inventory of manual handwritten tickets. We have a computerized software handheld program that is used by a couple, the traffic enforcement officer and the canine officer. But the chief feels that there is a need to maintain an inventory of parking, handwritten parking, manual tickets. So those would be paid from there as the need arose to put an order in, or.
In the event there was a software failure?
Well, the systems were down.
They could continue to function. Okay, thank you.
They do have some officers that prefer some of the handwritten.
Okay, thank you.
What was the law enforcement block grant that they put in for and we took out?
That was a grant match that they had to make, and they don't have that grant any longer, so.
The clothing allowance is seventy-five thousand. I see it's consistent year-over-year, but so far this year, they've only, through six months, they've only spent seventy-eight hundred.
It's paid annually, so.
So that was my question, was it paid at the end of the fiscal year?
I'm not sure. I think they paid at the end of the fiscal year.
So we can't really annualize that.
And that's going on employee or Wendy? Employee training? How's that? Is that the civilians, other than the other? That'd be a couple down from the block one, that'd be fifty-three eleven.
On the expense side?
Yeah.
That would be the cost of attending a class or setting up a seminar, whereas the employee training on the salary side would be the overtime paid to the officers to attend that training sessions.
Wendy, can I just ask a general question? Will these be available for FinCon?
They were mailed today, actually.
They're available, yeah, okay. And if I could ask just one more question. We always have the department managers explain their budgets, and just from my recollection, you don't just pick a number out of the unit and say, you're going to have to look at this one, the obvious little process that you go by.
Yeah.
How much do they fight for their requests?
Well, I think everybody, I think, I don't think it's a secret that we've been under-budgeting a lot of these departments for many years, so most of the departments ask for increases and they put what they request on. I think a little different than maybe in the past, where they're just told, this is sort of what you request. That's why you'll see in this budget where you have requests and they may not be the requests, whereas I think in the past, you would have those matching. But, you know, I think everybody's, no matter what department you're, you know, working for, your request and you're pretty adamant about some of the needs.
And the last thing I'll ask is, in this case, it's over two-hundred-thousand dollars difference, which is a rather large sum, but it's only worth about twenty thousand over what it was for fourteen. That seems like a pretty minimal increase. And yet you've awarded, you've already negotiated the salaries, right? These are all positions that are in the unit?
Most of them.
Most of them, and the ones that aren't, it's a three percent.
That's correct.
Is that true throughout the entire budget? If not, within the union, it's a three percent?
That's correct, except for a few.
Except for some notable.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, I think some of the confusion is that the, maybe the previous year was based on, as you know, from a kind of standpoint, fifty-two weeks. This year happens to be a fifty-two-point-three week of calculation, so it's not an actual increase. It's because there's more.
So there's an increase just by definition?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
On the next page.
Are we on to fire?
Nope, I'm still on computer.
Okay.
Oh, computer, please. Computer services, this is line item five-two, five-three, two-three.
Page twenty-two.
There was fifty-nine thousand in computer services for the budget, and they're asking for fifty-nine thousand again, and your suggestion is forty-nine thousand. And if we look at a date, at a date so far, six months, it's almost thirty-eight thousand dollars. So the question is, do you think forty-nine thousand is going to be enough?
You know, it's a budget, it's an estimate. We hope that it would be, and we were, you know, based on the conversations with the chief.
Did they have more computer services this year for a particular reason, with the new computers they had to?
I think they have general licensing and issues that come up with the computer system.
So maybe you pay more license fees over a course of three years, five years, so it makes sense that it's less?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on this?
Scott, could I ask a question? On the actuals, we always look at roughly the percentages to look for the highlights where we think it's a problem. Is there anything that you could focus at this point on with the committee? As far as where you see the problem areas?
It was in the fire budget?
Actually, within any of the budgets.
You have a.
Mr. Plesky, can I just ask if you could speak up just a little?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
I don't want to.
The microphone closer to you.
Since we're on the fire budget, I think one of the things that we're looking at is that the overtime has been allocated this year, and one of the reasons is because there's been hires and there's been quite a bit more training and monies that are allocated to background investigations for the new hires at the police conductor that's expensed to the fire department.
As well as in-house training before the cadets go to the academy. They're doing in-house training that they haven't probably conducted in the past.
So that would be one of the.
And you track that separately?
Yeah, we actually, we, although otherwise, we have our different codes set up so that we can see what the triggers are, that are the drivers for the overtime and those increases by the department.
Do you know what their current staffing level is with the hires, with the retirements? Are they where they were as of last year, and they'll increase with the safer grant?
That's correct. We have, I believe, a couple of retirements that are being filled as well as the safer.
So we really wouldn't expect to see reduction in overtime until all of those people are on board and working?
That's correct, and I think part of it is that there's going to be a, probably a phasing, phasing in and training, and then what happens is some of them go to the, with the fire department different than the police is that some of them go to the academy when there's one that opens up, but they can work for the fire department without going to an academy different than the police, so that they go in different phases depending on how many openings, so it'll be fluctuating. It'll be difficult to predict at this point what the savings would be.
Could I ask just a couple more questions, please? Mister Manager, on the same page, page twenty-three of sixty-four, or Wendy, the defibrillator stipend of a hundred and ten thousand dollars and the EMT certifications. I understand the EMT certifications, although aren't many of the individuals hired already EMT certified? Or is this for recertification and retraining?
That's correct. So like a stipend for them having.
And the defibrillator stipend?
Same thing.
Is it contractual?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? On employee training, I'm looking at, on page twenty-three, on line fifty-one ninety-three, there's ten thousand dollars. And then on the next page of twenty-four, on line number fifty-three-ten, there's also employee training. So I was trying to determine what the difference between the two were.
It's the same as we discussed in the police, the employee training on the salary side is overtime.
Yep.
Paid to the firefighters for attending the training. On the expense side, it's the cost of hiring a vendor or scheduling a class or a conference for those firefighters to attend.
So on the fifty-one ninety-three on that side of it, for the overtime, that ten thousand dollars would be in essence, would that be, so that would be sort of kind of part of the overtime budget, except for it's going to be just broken down for training purposes?
Right.
Gotcha.
And if I could just follow along with Mister Allen, Swackman Allen. Right below that, Wendy, it says, below employee training, it says schooling for officers, and then in parentheses, training. So that's on page twenty-four of sixty-four?
I think it's the same type of thing, and for whatever the reason, they're segregating that out, whether it's related specific to an academy type of thing. But it's all related to training.
Okay, thank you.
Who determines that it should be signed? Is that the fire department?
Yes, I mean, with officer in the title of the account, I would say that it's probably schooling for firefighters above the rank of firefighter, lieutenants, and captains, perhaps.
The hazmat first responder, line five-one-three-zero. The budget was twenty-five oh twenty-seven last year. They're asking for thirty-seven four four one, which are going, you're saying that's fine. But if I take a look at where we are so far, six months in, we've already spent twenty-four thousand one thirty-one, so I'm.
I'm missing a couple of pages, I think, but essentially, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's one of the contractual things that change.
So that's something that's also paid upfront as opposed to when there is?
That's correct.
I mean, that's the problem with trying to annualize something. You don't know exactly when it's going to be paid. Okay, thanks.
And Mister Manager, I know you're not, you're lacking the page.
Twenty-four and twenty-five.
Okay, so on twenty-four, we have arson, and maybe Wendy can answer twenty as well. We have arson squad, and we have a thousand dollars. Is that a stipend for someone to take on that additional duty or be designated for that purpose?
No.
No?
No, if it was a stipend, it would be on the salary side.
Okay.
So it must just be related, expenses related to arson investigation.
Okay.
It might be, it might be actually something that you belong to, that in case we have something that we share.
And right below that, we have mutual aid, and I'm going to assume that's to cover the cost of calling in a firefighter if we need to, no?
No, that's mutual aid pilots on the salary side. So anytime an officer or firefighter is called in for overtime, that has to come from a salary account, but I believe they participate in a mutual aid agreement.
Yes.
So if they call somebody in from another.
That's, that's.
I understand. Thank you very much.
That's why sometimes it's on the salary side if it's.
And sometimes on the expense, thank you.
Can you help me understand the captain line item? If I take a look to see what has been paid so far this year, I mean, this is something you should be able to annualize, everything salaries, right? So half a year is two oh five, so a whole year would be four-ten, right? And we have in our budget for next year, five oh three, six one seven. Are we hiring more captains? It says seven, is it seven and seven, or?
No, it's seven. There's a captain that was brought to, we created a deputy chief exam position that's a non-civil service, non-union position that was created and filled this year. And then they're going to be requesting and looking to bring a captain to take over the training, which they don't have a captain that's in charge of training, particularly with the rest of the officers, so it will remain seven.
And the contract was negotiated so that at the twentieth or twenty-fourth year, a captain receives an additional increase. So we have one captain who's at either that twentieth or twenty-fourth year in fiscal fifteen, so that's part of what the increase is. It's, they have a vacancy right now in the captain's positions, which will be filled, but it's not an additional position to where their staffing levels are right now. It remains at seven, but with the, that senior captain receiving that increase, that's part of it.
Okay, so do we have right now?
Seven.
We have seven. In the budget, we have seven.
Mm-hmm, and one of the seven that we have budgeted right now is vacant.
But in the actuals, then we only have six?
Being paid, yes.
Okay, so that's.
The budget is for seven.
Right, okay, that's.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That's where you'll see the areas.
Thank you.
Scott, I'm going to, the deputy chief, which is a new position, is it going to be filled from within?
It's already been filled.
It already has been.
Yes, the next captain that we, that we.
So that explains it to six to seven.
That's correct.
I'll step up to that budget, if I can.
I'll step to fire. The building department?
Mister Manager, do you have that page?
Twenty-six.
Okay. Is the, I have a couple of questions. Is the code enforcement officer a collective bargaining individual?
No.
They're not, okay. And the salary in two thousand and thirteen was thirty-eight-five?
I think it was thirty-eight on the.
Am I reading this correctly?
I think it was just one of the ones that was being paid out of a different account, but then it didn't finish the full year. Essentially, the code enforcement, all the inspectors and code enforcement are all at the same rate of pay.
Okay, now, and I'll ask you a question about that after, Mister Manager, but as of six-thirty-two thousand and thirteen, the actual salary was thirty-eight-five? Is that correct?
That's what would have been paid from that line item, yes.
Okay, and so in two thousand and fourteen, it was thirty-nine eight oh eight? Am I reading that correctly? And you're recommending an increase to forty-seven thousand four sixty? Forty-seven thousand, I'm sorry.
The budget for fourteen is thirty-nine eight oh eight, yes.
Okay, so that, so it is not a person who's a member of collective bargaining? And I heard you just say that this was one of the line items, if I heard you correctly, that was being paid out of an improper, but hadn't we resolved all of that when we entered our budget cycle in two thousand, June thirtieth of last year? I thought that had been all resolved in the budget process.
We just, we actually just, we just brought somebody on in twenty-fourteen.
No, I understand that, but you just mentioned, when we spoke about that position, that that was one of the positions of concern during the audit and the readjustment period. So in two thousand and thirteen, on June thirtieth, I should be able to look at that salary and feel that that's accurate, correct?
Yes.
And which one, I'm sorry?
In June thirtieth, when town meeting closed and the budget was passed for fiscal fourteen, I am to be comfortable that that figure is reflective of what the actual salary should have been.
That's reflective of the salary that was paid to the individual that held the position at that time.
Okay, so the line item issue was in the past. It had nothing to do with the current budget that we have budgets to actuals on. I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. Okay, thank you.
I have a question on the cell phone allowance on fifty-one ninety-five, where there was nothing prior. In two thousand and fourteen, now we get a thousand eighty. Who's phones would those be?
Different people within that department.
Within that department. And what's the standard, like forty-five dollars a month, roughly?
Yeah, that's correct. We have different, if they use a telephone, they go on our program. If not, then they get a stipend, or another stipend, but a reimbursement.
And then that would be with the car allowance also?
That's correct.
It's probably, what, two people?
Yeah, one would be five forty, so that's ten eighty. That's going to be two five.
Yeah, the phone is for two individuals, the building inspector and the code enforcement officer.
It's too small to.
And they, if, please correct me if I'm wrong, they're on call twenty-four-seven to respond, so.
I assume these people were getting cell phone allowances before, maybe in a different account?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's.
The cost allowance is the same thing, and that's probably, I think, what the other, she was asking, it was.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
That's why it's probably, I guess, sort of fixed cycles on the budget, and to you can sort of figure out what is being paid.
I think I'll ask this back, maybe I have some questions, but I'm going to come back and go right down.
I don't have anything for plumbing.
Plumbing.
What exactly, who was weights and measures?
That's somebody that goes out for the town and checks different, like gas stations and whatnot, and they're sure that.
Who was it? You know, can I just, the last budget discussion, names were bought into it, and it made me very uncomfortable. I'm sure it made the employees uncomfortable.
Okay, I just don't know who's in that budget.
I think it's always more professional to talk about positions, and I mean that with all due respect, but it just puts the person on in a defensive.
No, I just wanted to know who was in the budget.
It's the same person, I believe, who's been here many, many years, and he does all of the stores, the gas stations, everything that needs to have a weight and measure seal.
Secret, secret. Can't know who's in what.
Weights and measures. I'm good on that, still on weights and measures.
Plesky?
I believe he's a twenty-four-hour on-call as needed as well, correct, in the event of an issue?
To some extent, all of them are. I think there's two that are called more frequently, and then they're, they all pretty much make themselves available. There's one person that gets most of the calls and then.
Are we on emergency management?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
The training for two thousand dollars for emergency management, that is, they're going to be trained in every year? The people that are there, the two thousand dollars?
I think, yeah, those are for just different trainings that go on during the year.
Are they scheduled trainings, and they, everybody who's part of emergency management gets to participate in these trainings?
I think that's the director.
It's more for the, it's for the director.
Just for the director, not for the other members?
That's correct.
I think they bring the training back, they go on with the training.
And I also think there's a collaborative where they receive their basic rescue, first aid, CPR. I think there's a collaborative with other communities.
So we don't have to pay for that?
I can't tell you that with one hundred percent certainty, but from what I've been told, there's a collaborative where they go for their training, and because they're volunteers, I believe they do not pay for it, but I can't say that without.
No, I mean, I'm glad, I mean, it's a nominal amount. I'm glad that they're getting something to be trained. I just wanted to subtext you about it.
Mister Manager?
No, I'm sorry, sure.
Sorry. The fire chief, now that he's the director, does he get a stipend for that position as well, or is that just?
He doesn't. I think we're sort of in discussions to try to figure out how that'll work, but they're not getting a stipend now.
It's not reflected in this budget as well, get that?
He may appoint somebody, and then that person would be the coordinator or assistant or some title to take over that task. A lot of the training that emergency management go through, all the firefighters are trained in that type of hazmat and FEMA, all those stuff issues, all the firefighters have that training.
Thank you.
The animal control.
If I could, Mister Manager, can we allow we in the community with animal inspectors? I know there was a lot of discussion around that issue last year. Do we have animal inspectors? Because of the number of bonds that we do have.
Yeah, I believe we still have, the board of health appoints them.
So we'll look for that under their budget? Okay, thank you.
Scott, remove that to their budget.
Quick question on line fifty-three twenty-seven, which is the veterinarian piece.
I have that, I have that, too.
He put in a request for five hundred, and you bumped it up to fifteen hundred? What?
I think it's based on some of the, some of the needs, correct? On the, um, some of the things that come in, we have to pay, and then some that you don't get reimbursed.
I mean, if an animal came in and it was sick, he's going to probably do what he can to take care of it.
We have to bring it, yeah.
And you hope you get reimbursed.
And just to give an example, I think it was in the paper, I know he shared it with me when I spoke with him, the dog that was being abused that he took in.
Right.
He had to wait until the court case had progressed to a certain, um, point before he could put that dog into a foster, so-called foster home.
Right.
So the dog stayed with us and we were responsible, he said.
Yeah.
Sadly, believe it or not, just because of the economy and stuff, there are a lot more people serving their animals. It's very sad, but they can't afford to keep their animals. So there's a lot of people dropping off animals.
And he does an excellent job taking care of animals that are, I, I know personally.
Again, it's, I think, one of those budgets that, um, that departments have sort of underfunded. I think as, I don't know, I mean, I don't think it's a secret that, um, you know, we have a certain amount of revenue that we bring in, and we have to set a budget on what we bring in.
I think, as you said, last year, there's a lot of people that are generous in their donations to food and blankets and...
We have a lot of dog lovers, including me.
Any questions on the haba master?
I don't know, that's too high, that dollar is...
I remember one year they had a discussion for Alex over the donation.
But that's another, I'm sorry, that's another department that's, uh, refunded.
Could I just ask a question? And, and you may not know, so I don't want you to think it's an unfair question, but we are required to have a haba master because we're on a waterway, correct?
I believe that's correct.
And at one time, it had a very robust budget, and we actually, we actually had a boat, which I believe is across the street. And we were responsible for water rescues within a certain area. So I believe we are required. Um, it's, again, you know, an issue of liability, and so even though it's a dollar, it's something that maybe in the future is looked at.
Yeah, there's actually some training that goes on that, uh, I think the haba master actually goes out and it's, uh, you know...
Well, how do you go out when you don't have a boat?
Well, they use their own...
I know, I'm teasing. And of course, the liability of, you know, someone falling in on the waterways.
Dispatches.
I assume that the training works the same way as the other departments?
Yes.
I mean this with all due respect, but the dispatchers have a clothing allowance?
That's correct.
Okay. Do they wear a uniform when they dispatch?
That is correct.
They do, okay, thank you. I honestly didn't know that.
So, it might be a private contract.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a private contract. Um, essentially, when they formed, um, back, probably, it was probably nineteen thirty or whatnot, when they, uh, come in as a union, they essentially took all, you know, basically got the basic contract that the other line, you know, the other agencies have, which sometimes is not, might not be exact, but they sort of get the same benefits, and that's what they've had for years within their contract.
And if I could ask one more question? Um, the training for the dispatchers. Um, in the training line item, we have twenty thousand. Can we expect that line item in the next cycle to be reduced because of the training that American Ambulance has stated they will give? And also the responsibility they will take over?
Probably not, because the training that they do and part of what, unfortunately, another, um, area that is underpaid in those positions. It's such a complex job now, it's really a profession. And Sargis' salary for them is so underpaid that there's such a turnover now. Not only because they go to other communities to dispatch, but there's, they become, a lot of them want to become firefighters and police officers, and sometimes they have the opportunity outside the town. And what happens when they come back in, they have to get, um, all the different types of training that wouldn't be through, uh, any ambulance company. But a lot of certifications to be able to sit at that desk and answer the phone. So what happens as you churn more people over, it's, it's...
There's no cost savings, there's no cost.
...ten thousand dollars just in training for one, to be training a new individual in those positions.
Okay, and again, going back to the dispatchers, do they use a software program as they take in the calls and dispatch the calls? Because I was curious, that I didn't see a, a line item in there for some software.
Yeah, it's probably in the, it's, um, part of the services that they have in the police, the overall police...
All right, thank you.
Um, regarding the dispatchers, they've spent, you've spent thus far this year, uh, two sixteen, I mean, so you're significantly underway you would be after six months. Is there somebody on leave, or are we...
On which one?
Are we lost, we have one less person that we have in the budget?
We currently have a vacancy, um, in them, and we did have someone that was out on leave, yes.
Okay. Yeah, because I see that clearly you had to fill that position in because you have some temporary help that wasn't in the budget.
Well, one of the things that we did negotiate in the, in the contract with them is to allow per diem, uh, dispatches on, uh, call when they can't fully overtime. So that, uh, good and bad, in the, in the sense of money-wise, before we would have, uh, the fire department and, uh, lieutenants inside working the dispatcher overtime at a much higher rate.
I see.
So we've brought on per diem, it's, um, somewhat been successful, but, um, still, you know, it's, um, I think because of the rate of pay, it's, it's difficult to retain or to bring them. But we do have that, and that, um, is part of the, 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 part of this, uh, budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, I understand? Vocational school.
We still don't have a true...
Yeah, that won't shake out till April or whatnot. But I did have, um, I think I sent you guys an update. I did have a, a meeting with the vocational school, with, uh, some of the other, um, leaders from the, uh, financial people from the other communities. And the impression I got is that they would be asking, um, even more than what we're, like, they're looking at, um, more than the minimum, which they've been asking for the minimum, uh, for the assessment for the last, I think, under the last superintendent for many years, that they would be looking for, uh, a budget beyond the minimum. And I think we're going to justify that. We have, uh, some meetings set up to sort of go over their budget, to have a more involved process. Um, so, um, you know, we don't know where that number's going to be, but I think it might be, um, more than what's the minimum would be for the assessment. And then obviously, it's, there's a formula, and it's based on enrollment, which we don't get those numbers. Um, and then, um, the other part of it, that I think I did send out there, on, they are looking at, they were approved for an SOI last year.
I was just going to ask you that, Mr. Manager.
They have to do, the, the challenge for them is that they, if they do a borrowing just for the feasibility, which is about a million dollars, um, the MSBA, um, basically told them that, get your, last year that you're approved, pull your, uh, pull your application, just resubmit it this year, and we'll approve you again, just line up your funding. So they are looking at about a million dollars, and they're trying to figure out if they do a borrowing, then they have to get every community unanimously, I believe, to vote. And if they don't, which most other vocational regions have been successful at building new ones, is they do an election, which is, we'd still have to pay for that in the budget, probably a couple hundred thousand dollars. And if they get a majority of the, of all the communities, then that would be enough to get the borrowing, to do the feasibility, and then that gets them into the, the pipeline. So that is coming.
That's still going to give us a mechanism, though, to try to renegotiate the, and we're still stuck with the old formula.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of it is, and there's a lot of, you know, it's a clarification, because it's sort of a hard button issue, and I think there's a lot of, some misinformation. Wendy, I think, has taken some seminar on it, um, some educational classes. But the, the, um, the formula that we have for Sargis doesn't give us the same funding percentage-wise. But in reality of what happens if we were, um, is that you either pay, everybody's assessed at the same amount level funded. So if it's fourteen thousand dollars, it's, you either get that money, you either pay it, uh, as an assessment, or you, you, you receive that money for chapter seventy. So it's sort of, that's how it levels out. It's just it's hard to see because the money comes in a different format on the cherry sheet.
Madam Chairman, I have to excuse myself. If you're sure I go, I'd like to thank the manager for the DPW breakout. Something the financial community's been trying to get for, as long as I can remember. I believe it's a result of the Collins study.
That's correct. Just from the discussions with the financial community the last couple of years. It just makes it much more sense by doing...
I just want, so I was really happy to see you. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you.
So how were, how were we paying for Essex Aggie before? How were we paying for the Essex Aggie?
Essex Aggie now is, uh, now we're being billed directly.
Yes, so Essex Aggie is merging with North Shore Vocational School District, of which we are not a member of the district. So therefore, they will be sending us a bill for the tuition now, uh, rather than charging it to us on the cherry sheet.
So how the cherry, just in plain, simple terms, how the cherry sheet works is that you have local aid, and then you have assessment, and then offsets, and that comes up with a net number that, I mean, it's a little more, it's a lot more complicated than that, but that's essentially how it works. And I think just, vocational used to be on the cherry sheet, so it'd be netted out. Now it's being, uh, as a, as a build, built-in instead of the cherry sheet. Those kids that go to Essex Aggie, it costs...
What caused the reduction of minute man, was it just lack of, not as many folks going there?
That, that's enrollment.
That's an increase.
Yeah, that's a...
It was an increase, I'm sorry, I mean, an increase.
Yeah, we have three students going there now instead of one.
So that represents three students.
We had three a few years ago, then it went down to one, and then it's back up to three now.
Do you know how many, what, do you know how many we have going to Essex Aggie?
I don't. Enrollment becomes finalized, I think, on April first.
And part of the discussions that I had raised when I, just to go back, when we, not with the vocational school, uh, here at the Northeast, is that, and one of the things that we're going to try to do is, um, have a summit. Um, and, and I think people don't realize, they think of that as the, I think, at least in Sargis and, and went from, there's other communities that feel the same way. That is part of our whole educational system. And there's chill, there's different offerings there that, I don't know if it here, and the same thing with Essex Aggie. And, and we're trying to make a better connection and, and with the superintendent so that it's sort of complementing each other, and people realize that it's all one, it's not one or the other, um, in that sense. And I think that's something that's, they were actually, uh, going to, I, I think the superintendent indicated in talking about coming to school committee meetings here, and, and as well as maybe the financial committee.
I heard the number of the kids that are going to the book schools, one eighty-eight, is that correct?
I think that's a little high. Um, we're third, we're third, I think it's, um, Revere, or Chelsea, Revere and Sargis are the top three, uh, modest students.
I think the last chart that I saw, and I hope this number is correct, is one twenty-two or one twenty-three.
Oh, interesting. That's a lot lower than what I was told to say.
So, so the interesting part is that we, we, you know, in the sense of when we do in a, when they do an SOI and do a new building, is that we're actually getting more bang for the buck, so to speak, than someone like Chelsea. But Chelsea also bring, because if they do, Chelsea builds their own school, their, um, their reimbursement is like in the eighties or now they're, they're building, whereas when they, they actually help bring the, uh, because of their demographics, they bring, um, the reimbursement percentage up higher. I think it's around seventy-three, and then it nets out less. But, um, they actually pay more to build there because of the mixture of, of communities. That makes sense.
It always seems to be a question with all different communities. How come this community got this and we don't get that? And certainly, like, say, it's...
Demographics does drive a lot of it.
Public Works?
Um, Madam Chairman, Mr. Manager, I'm looking at the revised fiscal two thousand and fourteen budget of ninety-five thousand dollars for the Public Works Superintendent. But in the line listing that you had given us as of January two thousand and fourteen, this particular position is listed as, forgive me one moment, as a hundred thousand dollars. So actually, what was appropriated and what the gentleman is making is different.
That's correct.
So...
So through, through negotiations and, and meeting with them in the job offer...
So should we not have the two thousand and fourteen budget reflect that actual salary? Instead of...
Well, that's the budgeted estimate.
Right, so town meeting approved the ninety-five thousand, but he came in at a higher amount, okay.
Where was the money taken from the five thousand dollars?
It, within that salary line item.
Where did you take it within the salary line? Do you know exactly where you balanced these all up?
He hasn't worked a full fiscal year, so there's a surplus of funds.
Okay.
Probably right from that line item, so the...
Yeah, so the mon, the monies were available, appropriated.
Sure.
As you can see from the other evening, I think, um, we're very fortunate at that salary to return that gentleman.
Tree warden stipend, what is that? How is that taken?
Uh, so the individual who is the assistant tree warden, uh, he receives a stipend, I think, for being like a certified arborist. And it, uh, previously was paid from the existing salary account. So we've just broken it out and listed it separately. I think it was all paid from his assistant tree warden's salary account.
They could go to, you know, the tree committee meetings and help them out as well, and help out on tree committee days, so they'll get...
He is actually the enforcement person for court and writing violations.
How, Madam Chairman, if I could, how often does he go to court? I did, I honestly did not realize that our tree warden was going to court and writing violations.
They actually, this, I think this year, they, well, I think there was a couple of violations that were written this year, which wasn't, uh, I don't, in the past year, a couple of years they haven't. But we had some people that, um, they wanted to, um, had a problem with their tree, um, went in front of the tree committee, and they, when I was inspected, had determined that it wasn't a tree that should be cut down. Because there's always this balance where people want to cut the trees because they don't like them in front of the house or whatnot. And then the gentleman went, or the homeowner, cut the tree down anyway. And so they had to issue a citation or, or...
And so were we successful in court on a tree issue?
I'm not sure, they may have paid it or settled it, um, prior to that. But there's, it's quite hefty when you, quite an issue when you cut a tree down because of the replacement and the cost involved in it.
Okay.
It may still be unknown, but I don't know.
I, I just never knew our tree warden...
The, the tree committee here in town is very active.
Oh, no, I understand that.
They're doing all sorts of work, and I've gone on some of these tree hearings before, it's, it's really interesting.
Um, and I often have referred people to the tree committee for guidance so that they can replace a tree from the tree farm, if it's appropriately removed by the town. Oftentimes, you see your sidewalks lifting, um, but I just didn't know...
Yeah, I'm not sure if they actually went to court, but I know that they wrote, I know there was a violation.
Just when you sit in court, I thought, all right.
Yeah, ultimately, you end up in court if they don't settle.
So Wendy, that was his offset then on the three percent? Or the difference when you go back up to his, actually, uh, his line item on, um, five-one-one-one-one, where instead of being a three percent, it was like a point seven?
Right.
Seven-one percent. And curiosity, upgrade merit, what, what is that? It's not much money, but...
It's a contractual item in the ASME collective bargaining agreement that if the tree warden were out on vacation, the laborer, when he assumes the responsibility, gets a minimum seven percent upgrade.
That's what we discussed.
Like we saw in some of the other budgets. Okay, thank you. Could I, um, are we on forestry?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Manager, on forestry, or Wendy, um, the two new positions for laborers, um, I understand that increased based on the actions of town meeting. Um, but have those positions been filled yet?
Oh, in highway?
Oh, did I skip ahead? I'm sorry. No, I'm in forestry. I am on highway.
You're on highway, yeah.
Um, they're, they're, uh, they're in the process now of filling those.
And then, I believe, according to the Collins report, and I'm sorry, I did not bring it with me, but there were two additional positions that were recommended. Are you planning on going forward? Are you going to wait on those positions?
We're going to wait, we're going to put these on, and then, um, as you can see from here, the, um, one of the requests and one of the things we'd like to do is, uh, bring on an engineer that could do some engineering work. But, um, based on the estimate now and, and within the budget, uh, we're not able to find that at this time. But we're hoping that might...
Is the superintendent of Public Works, isn't he an engineer?
That's correct, but this would be more of, um...
I know, that's very...
He's not going to be able to, but he's not going to be able to do engineering work. Whereas if we had an engineer, um, like other communities have, that engineer could actually do some of the sidewalk work. They could do measuring the streets, actually do engineering as, as a designated, uh, function of their, of their job. Whereas the engineer department head director is really... Whereas the engineer department head director is really trying to run the department, but he's a good, you know, it's, it's, uh, he's a good pushback on some of the costs and whatnot that are going on with the outside engineers.
Good to be served, yeah.
Well, one more question, Scott, on, just my own curiosity and my own knowledge, tanker license? What's that, what type of license is that?
Um, that's like if they drive a certain type of, uh, high-velocity truck, um, they, uh, there's a certain license that's needed for that, and they receive a stipend for having that license.
And then for that to, um, for that to double, is that because we're adding more licensed people?
That, that's correct, they're more qualified, uh, there's more people that have that license that are allowed to have it.
When is that, when's that license utilized the most, is that during the winter time for?
No, just, I think, one of the machines, they have like a big wa, uh, high-velocity water, um, sewer truck is another one that, that, um, that requires a certain license to drive that type of vehicle. So it's all, all the time, and it just depends on now, especially, you know, the, the people do different jobs, um, rather than stay in one department.
Could I just ask, Madam Chairman, if I could, under things like clothing allowances and tanker licenses, when are they generally paid, at the end of the fiscal year?
Well, interesting, it's, I mean, it's completely complicated in the sense of some, um, things are paid, uh, on their anniversary date, some are paid July 1st, uh, and some are paid, um, weekly.
So there's no uniformity?
No, and with all the different unions and departments, it's, it's, uh, it's quite, um, you know, when somebody retires to figure out if there's prospective or retrospective pay and whatnot.
Thank you. Cemetery?
I'm just, Cemetery, um, Madam Chair.
Please.
Um, the accrued sick leave, somebody I assume is leaving?
Uh, we had a retiree, um, uh, the clerk retired, and because she's not part of a collective bargaining unit, she paid, received half of her accrued sick leave entitlement in fiscal 14, and she receives the other half in 15. And then we had, um, a gentleman who unfortunately passed away. And so his estate is to receive the payment of his accrued sick leave as well.
Thank you. Mister Manager, do you see, um, any additional staffing in the Cemetery Department in the future?
I think that's also in the process, that was most of it in, in the process now. And, and part of it is that we're discussing the reorganization at this point, and how that might play out within the DPW. And I think this is one of the positions also that was increased a little bit more than, um, the standard 3%.
And if I could, Madam Chairman, um, the equipment that the Cemetery Commissioner felt that he needed, is that something that will remain an active conversation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Three seconds, questions?
One quick one, car allowance, oh, is it, that's because it's two guys, I just caught that, it's two guys, so two people, yeah.
Can I ask a quick question on to Forestry?
Oh, did we, Forestry? I'm, I wanted to ask a question on Hox, like, before, before we-
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Chairman, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Mister Manager, it's been a long week. Um, Prankers Pond, I know when things were very difficult, we eliminated funding for Prankers Pond. Had a chance to take a ride down there, and I know you were going to make great efforts, and I'm sure that you did, to get volunteers to maintain that. That really is a hidden jewel, and there's no money appropriated for it. And I'm really afraid that it's going to deteriorate more than it has without some supervision. So do you have a plan for Prankers Pond? I know you don't have anything funded for it, and I know we had this conversation last year, but that really is a beautiful, beautiful, um, spot in this community, and I just would like to see some-
I think it's one of those areas that if we had additional monies, um, you know, you prioritize, and that would be one that we'd wanna have some monies allocated to make somebody sort of more accountable there. But I think it's, you know, it's difficult out that way, but what we have been doing during the year is, um, we've had, um, and I've met with the, the folks that, um, I, I just did an organ, I don't think they're official orders, as you might say, I guess the friends of Prankers Pond, and we've, they, they don't have, no, it's not official, I'm saying, I guess, I don't know what else to call them, but the people that are sort of passionate about Prankers, uh, we've met, um, three or four times during the year and set up different cleanup times and have, uh, resources dedicated to them, even though, I think, on the weekends, um, to try to maintain it during the spring and the, and the summer.
What do you think it would take to-
I, I think this is my-
Put a plan together for Prankers, so that there would be some level of preservation?
I think part of it is, um, I think the, even without the person that's, was, that we had there, I think the same issues existed, um, and the same sort of issues, and I, I think it's one of those areas that you probably have to have. Make an additional, um, responsibilities of the DPW, which I think that that's difficult.
Right now, with their staffing, I would think it would be very difficult, but maybe that's something we need to keep, uh, in the forefront.
I mean, we could see in the past, we were paying $3,000 a year, and, I mean, I know that there's a lot of cleanups down there, with the Boy Scouts, I know Safe has things down, I mean, a lot of people use Prankers Pond, and I agree with you that it is, just like Bracard and the other places, it is a hidden jewel, and it's, it, when you go down there, it's sad. And you always sit there and you start cleaning it up. I would like to see, it, it would be nice to have some monies allocated to it. But I, I do see people stepping up and neighbors, and they're out there, and they're cleaning with their trash bags, and they're doing things as well, so.
I think the problem is it's not a structured, consistent-
No, it's not, and it's-
And I'm not sure the wo, the warden, um, model that we had before is the right fit. It might be that, you know, it's something that's adoptive site-
I think it works because you live right there.
Right. Maybe it's an adoptive site type of issue, or, um, you know, or you have some sort of a contract that out for that, for that, and that's something we are looking at, but-
The only problem I have with contracting is it tends to boost the cost way up
Yes.
versus an allocation of $3,000 or $4,000 to maintain it. So I just, I notice again that it isn't funded, and, and I just don't want it to get lost.
Well, you know, just to piggyback on that, we have here Rotary upkeep for $2,000, which we didn't have Rotary upkeep in so many other years, and we see there's a lot of adoptive sites. I mean, you have Matterland Landscaping, all over the place, that you have, I mean, so I, the first question was, you know, if most of the Rotary is being, um, an adoptive site type thing, it's being, the services are being given to us. I wasn't sure what this was for, maybe it's just for over and above, and maybe somebody might adopt a Prankers Pond. I, I mean, the landscapers or somebody might wanna take that over and, and, you know, they could put up a plaque or, or something saying that that is something that they're, you know, proud of and something that they want to upkeep.
We could look into that, yeah.
Thank you.
Does this mean we're into Forestry now?
Um-
Because I got a question there.
We have the administration decision, yes, you have the Forestry, thanks. Any further questions?
We're good for Forestry before I go. On tree services, do you think that $10,000, because just looking around town right now?
The, the, the request for tree services is like this, um, it's just backed up, and we haven't really allocated enough money in the past years, and there's a lot of people that have, um, put in requests.
Because I'm seeing branches everywhere.
Yep, and you know, it's not just only branches, people will stop you. My sidewalk is lifting, I'm afraid the branch is going to go through my child's window. But it's just amazing where you go, and, you know, again, it's from years of not keeping up with it, and it's gonna take a little bit of time.
From a resident standpoint, I think this is one of the things, it's like plowing or whatnot, that is, is, um, sort of, it's, it's, it's something that, that's, uh, residents are in need of, that hasn't been addressed, so that that's the, would be an increase.
Madam Chair, for you, the sidewalk committee, has the sidewalk committee addressed some of that, those issues with the, the trees coming up? Will they be problematic walking?
They have, um, well, they have a list of whatnot and, and of, of different trip houses, and there is a plan put in place, um, as far as, I think, we're gonna be starting some work on Main Street in this different, different lo, excuse me, locations. And I guess to our benefit, the, uh, one of the bids that went out, um, one of the companies, they bid it incorrectly to their detriment, and we sort of had some conversation with them, and, um, that's positive because it leaves some extra money left over to do additional sidewalks. But there is a, a plan that they put together, a master plan of emergency trip houses, that we're gonna be trying to pick a way out.
But going back to-
Thank you, Mr. Menugie. Sorry, go ahead, no, Mr. Sutton Allen, then I'll keep that.
Thank you.
No, I'm just gonna see Mister Allen, I think he had a question as well, so I'll, I'll recognize you.
Going back to the branches on the, on the tree services, do we have anything in plan? Because just, this, this year alone with these storms, I seen like significant-sized branches that came down, that broke off the trees. Do we have any type of like inspectional where people will go prior to the spring coming full force to see what damages are there and cut them down before they, because one of them that fell down, like on Winter Street, I think it was like right around 58, that was, that was probably like a, probably about a foot and a half diameter branch that came down. It was pretty big, and it landed in the street. And it broke, and it broke right off, and I've seen quite a few of them go right in, right along that stretch.
So please, just if you wanna just shoot me an email, we can, you know, they, you know, when the spring comes, they can take a look at, uh, you know, all that.
And I do know, and I do hear it on the scanner, the police do dispatch DPW too.
No, DPW was awesome, they-
But they do, if, if someone calls and says, I have a branch in the middle of my street, or the branch is gonna fall down, they do call up someone, I, I've, I've heard it.
There's, there's a couple of things that go on at the same time, is that a lot with the wire issues, there's companies that go out, uh, for private companies, and they cut, you know, expert in trees, one of them, and there's another that cut a lot of the branches back, but then there's some other ones. But, um, if, if you have lists or places you think we can certainly be a little more proactive and try to have the DPW among the many things that they're doing.
Well, I, I do know following up on just sidewalks, I know there've been a lot of the older ti, I know we've been trying to do main streets on our sidewalks, and, and I know it's a, it's a huge project, but a lot of the older streets, you will see, um, the older parts of town as well, down off of, you know, Essex Street, um, really needs some attention. So what I do is, and I'm sure you've done it too, is, is to ask that they place a phone call so that there's at least a record.
Mister Menugie?
Yeah, I'd like to update you, and be brought it up, and also like pitch if I could, uh, on, on-
I need to speak up.
I said I'd like to update you as Chairman of the Sidewalk Committee on the issue that's been raised, as well as make a pitch on something that's in the budget that appears like it might not be funded. First of all, the Sidewalk Committee worked, put tremendous effort into literally walking and documenting the panels that are defective on, not only the main streets, but on some of those side roads, Essex Street, you know. We literally, we counted 100 from Rotary up to, uh, up to the highway, up to the high school, up to Pierce Drive. And four of you voted consistently as Town Meeting members to allocate 18% of the budget of Chapter 90 funds towards sidewalks. Up until this last year, we had a handicap ramp program, which is substantially complete, and as we reported to Town Meeting, it was the vote of the Sidewalk Committee to begin Lincoln Avenue from, essentially from Central Street as far down as we could to Chestnut Street, Valley Street intersection. The problem that they were running into now is that while we've had tremendous luck with our private engineering service, because doing the handicap ramps wasn't a lot of engineering work, there were no surveys, now to do Lincoln Avenue, the engineering cost of the $115,000 allocation is $55,000. The reason for that is because of the surveying, to make sure when the sidewalk goes in, you're not approaching as soon as it's gone.
Right.
And so I raised that issue because that engineering position in the budget that right now is not being funded, I'm hoping to advocate for that as this process goes on. Because if we had an in-house engineer to survey, uh, do the survey and do the monitoring and draw the plans, that, that's funding that we could use the 115, the 18% to lay new sidewalks. So while there is some money going into repairs, I believe about $25,000 to $30,000 on Main Street, I think, is slated on that, on that bid, as we go forward, unless we have a engineer, as we replace sidewalks in Townville, we're gonna have to spend a lot of money on surveys, and so that's something that an in-house person could do. So it's just an updating the pitch, and if we have all our votes and our minutes, if it would help update you folks, I'd be happy to provide it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have the Forestry decision, we're on to the engineer.
Professional services on this one, going from 20 to 10. First off, who, what is the professional services for the engineers? Is that, would that be of that pot, a pot-time engineer that provides services to the planning board and that type of thing? You know, we cut in?
Well, I, I think that that's probably one that we should, you know, keep an eye on, the, I think the DPW Director, um, was gonna try to take on a little bit more to make reductions there and-
So that's aside, you're saving it all, would be on-
But I, I don't, you know, yeah, I mean, it's a, just a, I think he was looking at, uh, trying to save a little bit there to get, uh, increases in other areas, and that, um, is still something that we need to keep an eye on as the budget moves forward.
Any questions? Still on the Highway question?
Mister Manager?
Yes?
Um, we're on Highway, uh, snow and ice. Looks like so far, we, we spent just shy of $40,000, according to the actuals.
But the, the actuals only go Wendy's-
The 31st, correct?
To the 31st of December.
My question is,
Oh, I don't have it.
Do you know where we are at this point in time, because we've had so much snow this year?
I, 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 um, what do we have in the actuals now?
Last check, it was a deficit of about $400,000.
But it's north of that.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I would suspect, um, because we don't have everything, and we're trying to new, the actual, the DPW Director is putting in a new system so that we can get information back quicker, he's having, everybody has forms that they'll have to sign off when they actually leave, uh, or get knocked off plowing, so that we can have a turnaround of, of trying to determine how much we've spent. Um, and it's just better accountability, um, but I would say it's, you know, I'm hoping that we have, um, as you know, we, we reserve, um, approximately 800 and somewhat 1,000 in the free cash account, um, so that we can pay for snow and ice that we incur this year. Obviously, keeping our fingers crossed, and hoping that we don't exceed that. But I think, you know, it's likely gonna be, you know, it's, it's getting, you know, heading in that direction.
And around 10.
So we spent the 150, and we're at 400 in the hole.
At, at, at a hammer.
Yeah, I understand, all right, thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I could ask either Wendy or the manager, the landfill monitoring, I know that that is required by the Department of Environmental Protection. When does that monitoring end?
You asked this question last year, I remember the answer.
And I honestly don't know. I honestly don't know, I know there is a date certain where we no longer are required to monitor it.
I, I-
I thought it was 20 years.
I, I believe it's 20, uh, a, a minimum of 20 years, and I think we're, if we go backwards, I just, it's funny, because you had this same answer, and I had the, we had, we got the answer.
But in the foreseeable future, we'll continue it, you think, to have to continue to-
Yeah, I think, I think one of the questions was if, if, would it be possible to get less years? And they said absolutely not, it's likely that you would get, even after the 20, they would reassess it, and you would get additional monitoring.
And the reason I ask that is, I know the CHAM program is progressing. Is any of the landfill going to be disturbed with the CHAM program? Is it far enough away from the monitoring, so there'll be no-
It won't have any effect on it all, and part of that is the DEP would, is permitting, or we're in the process now, we're just getting that
Thank you.
to be able to use it for that.
Going off topic, are you still looking at SOLA?
That's correct. One, one of the things that we, and I, I gave you guys an update a few weeks back, is we, we did receive a grant, uh, through the MAPC, um, which is fantastic, and it's, um, uh, what they call a LEAP grant, and they're assist- they call a LEAP grant. And they're assisting us in becoming, the technical part of becoming a green community. And one of the things that they're giving us assistance on is this solar, solar energy fund initiative that we're rolling through as well as helping us come up with a five-year plan to reduce our energy costs by 20%. We're looking at a zoning bylaw change overlay now that the economic development coordinator, myself and with the assistance of them, are putting together that would designate certain areas like the landfill area, which is the town's property anyway, as well as area, that would be designated for renewable solar type energy, which is one of the criteria you have to do to be accepted as a green community. Or ultimately accepted as a green community, then year after year, you're able to apply for green grants to replace boilers or change windows. A lot of it is we're looking at, we're doing some assessments in the buildings for energy assessments. Actually, we just talked about this for the SOI today. We had met to put, start doing some of the writing about trying to get the building assessed because a lot of the SOIs talk about the energy efficiency, that if you shave 50% energy, you could use that to put more towards education.
I know. I did hear from the meeting that I was going to accept that you're targeting the key words, if you will, based on the successful applications that you've been able to review, correct?
That's correct.
Great.
Madam Chairman, if I might, just following up with the manager. So the technical assistance grant that is going to assist us with qualifying as a green community, I'm familiar with MedFID, who went this route and was, then became quite eligible for quite a few really creative grants. How long do you think before, the tech, actually two questions. How long do you think before the plan is created and the bylaw and now an overlay? Because once that's done, and only when that's done, can we then go on for more grants?
Yeah, the, the process is that we have to do all the requirements to be, to be able to apply for the green community. And that's what the MAPC is assisting us in doing.
So a timeframe?
And that's, I think the application, if they'll call me, I think is in August or sometime at the beginning of the fall.
It's not a lot of time.
That we would, we're actually looking at, one of the things is you could actually look at our bylaw and you might have by right to be able to put solar. So that may satisfy. But I think it shows, they said it makes, if you take affirmative move initiative to actually change the zoning and do an overlay, which we have, they gave us models, so economic to, so that's looking at probably the annual.
And could I also ask, just following this up, is that are we encouraging the alternative energy committee to be involved? To give their input, to have an opportunity to participate?
Well, it's interesting because I think that they've sort of, they're going through a transition of reorganizing. And part of what the MAPC is that there's, most communities now have created almost two different, I don't think it's the whole thing, but I think that they, this energy group that most communities have had sort of have different priorities and they've, most places have split off because they have a wind and then a separate committee that would just be for this type of solar.
Well, I think we as a community ask that they not pursue the wind. But I think they might have some valuable information to share. So I hope they have that opportunity, whether they're going through a transition or not. So I just share that with you. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
But the grants are pretty significant.
Yes, they are. MedFID.
Couple hundred thousand dollars, LED lighting and all kinds of different things.
MedFID got some very big grants.
And we're looking at two of the schools, the veterans in the Belmonte with solar on, and they help put the RFP together and whatnot also.
Any other questions on the highway? Any questions?
Can I ask just a general question? I know that, you know, up at the DPW, you put in the new fuel management. Yeah, I was trying to think of the actual name of the device. But you have all the new fuel management's information and for all the new efficiencies. I was wondering what that did to the budget. I assume we saved money, you know, putting these efficiencies in. And where do we see that in the budget?
Well, you'd see it with fuel or what the cost of fuel is and what the use is.
Right. But do we see any particular one-line item that shows that efficiency?
Not necessarily. I think it takes, it would take a couple of years to sort of, to see where, how it plays out.
Thank you.
In the sense of the amount of use. And then obviously the fluctuation with prices. You may not see, or you may see more significant depending on the price.
Madam Chairman, if I might, Mr. Manager, under the motor fuel and lube for the police department, you've got that budgeted out at $130,000. With the new Cruisers that we are leasing, why would that number be as high as it is? There doesn't seem to be, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, that many older models still on the road. I understand that they may need maintenance because they're going 24/7. But I was just curious that, why that line item was high with all of the new Cruisers being leased?
That's particularly fuel for all Cruisers. That doesn't really, that doesn't reflect any maintenance.
Okay. It says maintenance. So that's why I asked the question.
Down below for $130,000, motor fuel and lube.
Motor fuel and lube.
Up top is the maintenance.
It's up top is the maintenance.
Right. Is that the number you're referring to, up top, for $60,000, or the $130 for fuel?
Actually, I just think the number, I thought the numbers would be lower where they leased brand-new vehicles. And so that's why I asked.
Purchased, we purchased.
I thought we-
Yeah, no, we purchased.
We purchased. I, I thought we were leasing.
No, maybe we went, we tried to figure.
Either way, brand-new vehicles, I would think, wouldn't need that much. But, thank you.
Any other questions on the motor vehicle maintenance?
One more.
Cemetery.
Cemetery. The cemetery, since their equipment is in such bad shape, there's $6,000 appropriated for motor, fuel, and lube. Where are they driving to? What are they driving, I guess, would be the bigger question.
Yeah, they have, just all their equipment that they have there, that's what, that's the, what's been budgeted and what they've used for fuel, based on the equipment they have down there and the trucks and the plowing and the lawnmowers and all that in the back row.
And I think part of what we're seeing is with the fuel management system.
Now figuring out where it's allocated.
The allocation of fuel is far more efficient and accurate. Whereas things might have been allocated to a cemetery line item where the fuel wasn't necessarily used at the cemetery. But the AIM units and the IDs are very specific and the report is very specific. So I think this being the first year with the fuel management system, that's where we're going to see all of these changes and accuracies take place. If you look at the six months, the cemetery has 72% of the fuel line item remaining. So it sort of makes the argument that the accuracy is more reflective in the fiscal '14 budget with that fuel management system, where the allocation of fuel may not have been as accurate because it was all a manual based system and a log and, you know, that type of thing. So.
So a few cycles before you really will get a feel.
At least this fiscal.
What would be the difference between motor pool expenses and motor vehicle maintenance?
So the motor pool expense is if our motor pool foreman performs a repair in service in-house. Motor vehicle maintenance is if he has to send a vehicle out for a service and repay a vendor. That follows the whole UMS manual and guideline according to the DOR.
And that's a question that comes up at every budget.
Great.
Any other questions on the motor vehicle maintenance division? Cemetery issue expenses.
Ms., Madam Chairman, Mr. Manager, I know that you had renegotiated the rubbish contract. And I know it is for a, several years. And we were, I believe you had said that we would see a reduction. And so the line item is up just a little bit. And I wondered when we would see that reduction.
And which budget?
Rubbish contract.
Maybe the hauling went up and the rubbish itself went down.
I can understand the hauling going up with gasoline cost and-
And the hauling, but the rubbish itself goes down.
And the rubbish, the hauling is, should be increased, which it is. And then the resco rubbish, that contract is, would be January 1st of next year.
Next year. Okay, thank you.
That's in half the fiscal.
Thank you.
So it goes from 600 to 565 in 2015. When does that contract end? The new one you just signed?
Five years, January 1st.
So how much does it, where does it start?
It's a two and a half increase.
It's a two and a half percent increase? So is it 565 for the first year?
No. It would be, 565 is half a year of what the current rate is and then a half a year of the new rate. So the old rate, I think, was like-
600?
$74 per ton going to $62 or $63 per ton.
And then from there, it goes up?
Every January. So you'll have that half.
Yeah. And are we still, a percentage of the total trash that goes there, it's about 5%?
I don't, I don't have that.
It used to be 3.8. I heard it went up a little bit. So I'm just curious.
Questions on recycling?
Madam Chairman, through you to the manager. Mr. Manager, this is something that I've heard quite a bit all of last spring and last summer. And I believe all of us heard it. And it's the condition of our parks and playgrounds. Looking at the annual report from the DPW, he talks about the fact that there are two employees maintaining nine parks and playgrounds. And it's a constant battle as he describes it. They pick up the trash twice a week and they do what little that they can.
Although they won't be picking up the trash this year because when I renegotiated the hauling, I now have the haulers picking up the Clifford Mill and Saugus Center every day, as well as Fisherman's Landing and the parks twice a week, the four major parks and then the other ones once a week.
Well, then actually, that's a decrease once a week. Because what was happening was with DPW, it was twice a week. And so my point is the overall conditions of all parks and playgrounds is sad. We heard it, all of us, that people take their children out of community, I think you even spoke about it, to parks and playgrounds because our parks were inadequate, unsafe. We've heard of elementary school children organize sports, having their games canceled and needing to play out of town. And I would just ask you to please take a look at playground maintenance and field maintenance. A lot of the organized sports maintain the fields in the spring and the summer themselves to try and get them to where they need to be. And I'd really like to see a plan for the parks and playgrounds. And I'd like to try and find. Because when you take nine parks and playgrounds and take those two line items, we're paying approximately, we're spending approximately $4,000 per park. It may be a little bit more because World Series Park is being maintained in a different fashion. But it's just a really quality of life issue. And as you recognize, the library and bringing them up to 100% funding, which you should be applauded for. And it's a real quality of life issue. These parks and playgrounds are a quality of life issue too. So I'd really like to see a plan, a quick plan. This has gone on too long.
Two things in this budget that not necessarily reflected in the budget now, but a couple of things that we are looking at is, that would, at least labor-wise, is looking at the possibility of contracting out at least the grass cutting and whatnot. So that would free up the manpower. That's something that was recommended in the DPW budget. Not sure if that's something that, you know, we have to do an analysis on that. The other part of it is the capital improvement plan would address at least the capital needs in that-
Because we don't even have an acceptable tot lot, a safe tot lot, tot lot. And I know in talking with the Collins Center, they seem to think that that was a very expensive undertaking, which I think we all know, to do an adequate playground. But I also think it's a priority and I hope it is a part of the capital improvement plan, even if we targeted one park a year.
Well, I think that you'll find that, as you go around town and you talk to people and you guys are out there talking to people, there's a lot more people that are not necessarily vocal, that are, you know, I always say that everybody you talk to wants to improve the athletic fields, the parks, the playgrounds. I think that's part of prioritizing, I think, within the capital improvement plan. It's, that's a real need, I think, that hasn't been addressed over the years within the community.
Absolutely right. It's not any one person or any one administration, but I'd like to see it made somewhat of a priority.
Where are we with Bristol?
Bristol, we're waiting for the snow. The snow has to melt off because they want to go out and, out on the field, do a field setting and whatnot. And then, and then, you know, put things together and move forward. But that's something that we'll be having for in the spring.
Mr. Manager, if you haven't had a chance, if I could just remind you to, we talked about you taking a look at the pump station down there. And I know neighbors in Precinct 10. I know you had talked a little bit about parking reconfiguration to take some of that congestion off the street, which I think is a great idea in the terms of safety and parking. They're very concerned about drainage in that area. So that if you do do that, no matter what, not you, what the town decides to do, whether it be gravel, where does that water go? So I know it's a big issue, but people are asking about the park upgrade.
I think the drainage issue is something that is a major, major undertaking, probably separate to the park. But I think as far as with the park itself, they feel, based on at least a preliminary discussion, that, that part of that front area is where all the water collects and fills up. And it's because of probably 40 years of mulch. And it's not the best setting. So that, what would happen anyways, that we're looking at putting a gate in the front for the pumping station and then expand and having parking so that there's parking.
And that, bingo, there's the concern. Their concern is-
But they would raise that up, right.
But if it's not from years of mulch, then we could exacerbate the situation. So all I'm saying is before we add the parking, that we'd be very sure we're not going to make the flooding situation down there worse.
No, we'll have, like, the engineers make some sort of scientific-